Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order this public meeting of the Board of Johnson County Commissioners on this twenty-sixth day of May two thousand twenty at ten o'clock A.M. Please pray with us if you care to, and then we'll stand for the Pledge and Allegiance.
Would you bow with me for a moment? Prayer, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful stretch of weather. It's been a wonderful respect from what we've been experiencing. Dear Lord, as we pray for the health of the people in our country, we also pray for the health of our nation. We just pray that you be with us, dear Lord, in the decisions we make. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
The Pledge and Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Needham Fire Protection District requests for the Johnson County Board of Commissioners to amend ordinance number ninety dash. I assume that's what you feel.
That's what we're just talking about, yes. He's going to present to you, and if it turns out that we have an ordinance revision coming up, then somebody might need to work through it. Go ahead, see.
Good morning. Max Mauser, Office nine five one one.
Hold that mic. Yeah, I put that thing up a little higher. There you go.
Max Mauser, Office is nine five one one, East Ninety-Sixth Street, Indianapolis, Indiana, four six two five six. Here today to discuss a removal of four hundred thirty-three point oh-one acres from the Needham Township Fire Protection District. The property that we're looking at is located at the northeast corner of five fifty East or Jim Black Road on the north side of State Road forty-four. The property extends about eight hundred feet south of County Road one hundred north, and it extends to the east boundary would be even with about six hundred east, where you extend it six hundred east north. The property owners are in favor of that. It's been to the Needham Township Fire Board. They've signed the resolution to have that removed. You should have a copy of that in your file. It also has two exhibits showing the property boundaries and legal descriptions for those properties. We've talked to Franklin. They're in favor of this as well. We've actually been to their plan commission for the annexation and got a favorable recommendation last week on that as well, to move to the city council for their first hearing. With that, the property is to, under contract, be purchased by Sunbeam Development for warehouse property, which shows they've built the one on the corner that's now going in for DHL and Energizer, and then they're in the process of constructing the new one on the north side of State Road forty-four, nine sixty-five as well. That's a spec warehouse, and that's what's projected for this property as well. And they were looking to get it removed so they can start construction on another building next year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions. Somebody else has a question?
No, there's a lot of questions with all this, but I'll second that motion.
And just to clarify, that's to approve the request, and then we will prepare an ordinance accordingly?
Yeah, there's some.
Yeah.
There's some stuff that's happening here.
It's definitely not just a simple move with the law. No. I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Youth Connections Program update. Have anybody here for that?
Sweet.
He has all the power.
Hi, I'm Shana Gilbert, Youth Connections Executive Director.
We'll continue.
You guys ready?
We're bringing, he's bringing you up now, and I think the projector is warming up. Anyway, we can hear you, so if you want to get started, we're fine.
Okay. So, this is just to give you guys an update on where we are, on what we use our money for every year. We use our money for a reduced fee for custody evaluations and supervised visitation. Before the pandemic, we were roughly at sixty percent of people requiring the reduced fee. We do look for that to increase, probably to at least seventy-five percent of people. We also are seeing a huge increase in supervised visitation, and I look for custody evaluations also to increase as the ports get back into schedule. With the rise in child abuse and domestic abuse cases, I just see that need going up. We have made arrangements in our office. We have three hygiene stations. We have one in each restroom. We have one by the door. We have gloves, masks, hand sanitizer, and sanitizing wipes. We also have limited the toys that are available in our rooms, and we are only putting things that can be wiped down and sanitized after each visitation. We also are going to ensure that doors are kept open. We can have the visits in the park, different things like that, so we can ensure social distancing. And families in transition, we are also, we are offering the adult classes online still through Zoom due to not being able to get into the school building, but we are holding the kids' classes here, and we've made room in our office so that we can do that safely. And I think that's everything for right now. We've also are still running our Safe Place and Host Homes program, and we're working with IYSA on implementing some changes for that due to the pandemic and things. And that's about all we got going on right now.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Elective officials of Department of Health, Public Safety Communications, Nationwide Power.
Pete Brandt, I'm the One Director. You should have a copy of the agreement, it's just a renewal of the contract part under the power supply.
Have a motion, a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Brandt. Highway Department.
Luke Mastin, Highway Director. Your hair is a must. It's pretty awful, isn't it? It's, you could spike it or something, maybe. I think it's trying to do that on its own. It's a little, little wild. You can tell what side you sleep on. Go ahead. First item on the agenda is a request for approval and execution of the interlocal agreement for County Road four fifty west project. This has been through legal for all parties involved. The council gave their blessing given legal review at their last meeting, so all the details are ironed out, and we're ready to get this signed.
My note says pending legal review.
I have it.
Okay, so.
One, it's like one thing.
Yeah. It is pending legal review.
After a year of hard work on this, I'm making a motion to approve pending legal. A second, I thought we, I thought we did this already. It's a long, arduous process, not worth talking about here. But we're getting through.
Right.
What counts, yes. We're going.
And I think going back to earlier conversations, Mike was trying to, we're well into this project already. We didn't have this agreement in place, and he's already agreed not to spend over tax.
Well, as far as the financial terms of the agreement, those have been nailed down for a while, and so in terms of moving the project forward, it wasn't, there wasn't necessarily concern of the parties agreeing to contribute the financial amount that they'd already agreed to contribute. And both Center Grove had set money aside in their budget, and Farmersville had made an official motion at one of their meetings previously to approve that. So, the money was agreed to in a public venue.
And that's, in essence, what this interlocal is doing, right?
Yes.
Just ensuring we get the money.
Exactly.
So you've already said that we were getting the money.
Yes.
Not sure we even need this, essentially.
We do, because money's changing hands between government agencies, so an interlocal agreement is required. As long as it solves shop claims.
I have a motion, a second. Pending legal, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The second item is our two thousand nineteen annual operational report. We're required to submit this to DNL TAP by June first each year. The numbers in the report essentially are taken from the financial system that we use to track our budget and our expenses, just broken down in a little different way, specifically more geared towards what that money was used for, as far as construction, administration, or other operational costs.
In your memo period, you said you were going to send it to us prior to our meeting?
Yes.
I get that.
I got it this morning. Yeah. I had.
I didn't have it.
I had email. I actually had to send it from my personal email account, not my accounting mail. I just, I think I changed this morning. I got it this morning, but I think I'm looking at it. It's very riveting. It always is. It's very riveting reading. Ron, I like it.
Yeah.
It is interesting. It does help us keep track of where we were at the beginning of last year, whether our expenses were exceeding our revenue, and what our end balances were at the end of the year. So, it's a good financial tracking tool for us. What LTAP and State Department accounts want to see is a little more detail on what those expenses were for, based on certain classifications under state statute.
I did have a question for you that was in the claims, but the two hundred eighty-eight thousand bond payment, was that, is that the last payment on that?
No.
Is that the last?
No, it's not.
You got one more, did you?
Yes. The payment in December of this year is our last payment on the bond.
As I've talked about, once that expires, maybe looking at that on bond issue for street road repairs and some of these subdivisions that keep fighting with all the time, the life of times or whatever.
There's definitely a need. That's definitely a need.
Yeah.
We've been paying on the bond for.
Six years.
Longer than that. I think about ten, so that would be nice to see that payment.
Right on, yeah.
You could rebond it and take that center grass out of the lane, which is better. Sorry.
We couldn't bond that, the dollar amount that we were taking to build that at the time. What we bonded was the maximum.
You don't need any action on this memorandum?
Technically, I need approval of the report. However, it looks like you haven't had a chance to look at it yet, so ultimately, it's up to you guys. The only issue for me is that I just have to have it submitted by June first, which I've done electronically. It's easy to do, so.
June first is going right around the corner.
I'm not going to read it anyway.
I'll make a motion to approve it. I mean, Luke's put this together. I mean, Ron, you can look at it. I've got a copy of it sitting on my desk if you want our copies, so.
I could make it through the last one. I did look. They have gotten better, actually.
Yeah, it's not as hard, it's not as bad as you may expect.
It's a skinny paper. I think you've been doing it long enough.
I'm just fact finding right now.
Well, and if you've got questions, then as you look at it, it's free luck.
It just gives you the freedom to go ahead and file.
And I'll hold off until then. That's not a huge problem if you've got to look at it.
That'd be great. That would give Kevin and Ron time to look at it.
I looked at it for about ten minutes this morning. That was all I.
I opened it. I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Luke. Care's Act, Certification of Reimbursement.
The only thing you really need to approve today is the coronavirus relief fund acceptance certification that's been issued by the Indiana Finance Authority. They want you to sign that before you start submitting items for reimbursement.
Only thing I want to point out in this letter from the office management regiment, I'd like to see the state's explanation on how they're going to get two point four billion and only give ninety-two counties, all the cities and towns, and whatever townships that might apply, three hundred million of that. I'd like to know where the other two point one billion's going, how the state come up with that point, that that's beyond me. Nevertheless, is what it is, I guess. Somebody ought to be reaching out and trying to find out an explanation there. Well, you know, we need to recover whatever costs we've incurred, actual costs, and make sure that that's what we're recovering, the actual costs, and not kind of inflation. I would move to approve the certification of reimbursement.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I've been told I need to repeat what I said. So, the, what you're taking action on is the signature for the coronavirus relief fund acceptance certification from the Indiana Finance Authority.
Yeah, that's what I meant to say.
You did fine. They just couldn't, they couldn't hear me.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Credit card claims.
No for the claims. I, the first one I got is community corrections who had a claim for two, for two sixty-one, two thousand six hundred and ten dollars and eighty-six cents. Be able to treasure Johnson County, and I just wondered, is that a meal reimbursement for the jail? And if it is, are you recognizing that as a revenue source?
Are you asking Michelle on this?
I'm asking it kind of a general question. Do I care to answer?
I'd have to research it. I'm sure it's not.
Okay, well, let's do that.
I'm sure it's not a revenue or a source of income, because it would have to go through another avenue, so I'm assuming maybe a food and beverage. I'm not real sure. I'll have to look out and see.
Yeah, just curious, you know, that, that amount going to the treasurer, the only thing I could figure was reimbursement. You do bill community corrections for the meals you.
I have the last one.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, we'll check on that.
I'll follow up on that.
Under the jail projects, I know we were using Kathleen on a work time contract kind of basis, but she had a claim for two thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. I just wonder, because I thought everything was in place, all the construction contracts and everything, maybe that's.
I have a, I have an answer for that.
Okay.
I'm going to deal with that. Summer County was messed up on the Kathleen bill. This has nothing really to do with what she's doing. There's continuing legal work on this. As you know, they've suspended up construction for two weeks on the project just because of the outbreak in the jail, okay? So they've stopped. She has to stay constantly looking at the legal aspect of this project throughout. That's why we hired her to do that throughout the project. So you're going to see periodic building from Kathleen coming through.
I have invoices from January.
Yeah, I kind of thought maybe it was accumulated.
Yeah, it's, it's just waiting for a while.
I don't think it's going to be a large amount. It's just going to be some continuation of the billing coming in by hours or something. I'm always harping on a prosecutor, and their bills with PetSmart and people like that. They had a PetSmart, seventy-one forty-seven, Tarter Shield, and I think that's, Tarter makes, I know, like hay feeders and things that.
That same day.
Yeah, one hundred and forty-four eighty-eight, and then Amazon seventeen oh seven, and they had all three listed as operating supplies. So I just, I might have to reach out to them and have them be more specific in what they're.
Send you copies.
Yeah. I mean, those aren't, obviously aren't operating supplies, and that's just kind of a generic thing that they use so they don't have to give a description of what the expenses were. They also have office equipment, one hundred and sixty-seven ninety-seven, ten dollars and forty cents, and again, there's no explanation of what, what that is. The whole idea of the manifest was for us to be able to see specifically what they're spending money for and make a determination on it. Other than that, I don't have nothing for the sheriff. It's disappointing, I know, but other than trying to get him two thousand six hundred and ten dollars.
Revenue stream. You'll take it, right?
Yes. That move to approve.
I have a motion, a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion of signs on the courthouse lawn.
No. How's that?
That was pretty quick. I didn't hear much discussion. I will say that's the way it's always been since I've been here, and I don't know for any reason.
We've usually outlawed all the signs on any kind of property, courthouse, parking lots.
Yeah, under campaigning, I think is what we call that. It's always been that way. I know that. I got that phone call this morning, so I just bring it up. When I brought it up, I was told we'd talk about it here. That's what we're doing. Still, still saying no. We don't need to vote on that, correct? Because that's the way it is now.
I think the purpose of the discussion today was just to make it public that you're not allowing any signs campaigned or otherwise on the courthouse lawn.
Signs of any kind, actually.
Right.
On the courthouse lawn. That's what I was always under the impression of since I've been here. That done? Public comment. Hi, Betsy.
Hi.
You knew I was looking at you, right?
Betsy Swearingen, I, Director, Health Department.
CDC says there's no, no danger from contact anymore than.
Well, I don't know if you saw the pictures this weekend in those arcs of the social distancing, which was, I don't know, a half an inch apart. So, and I say inch, they, thousands of people side by side. That said, we had a nursing home that was one of the very first ones to shut down to the public. Some guy thought it'd be great on Mother's Day to sneak himself in. Now his father's on a van, and mom might not make it either. So, it is still out there. It's probably, well, rear its ugly head again. We just have to stay the course and keep doing what they've preached from day one, and it was working. We just need to make sure we keep doing that and being very conscientious of our fellow people, and you can still get sick, and it can still be deadly. Sorry to be, you know, sad, but it's just kind of what it is. Now, I will entertain questions if anyone has any.
When did that nursing home event occur?
This weekend.
Did it this weekend?
No. I believe this person snuck in sometime after Mother's Day.
Oh.
What are the numbers, Betsy, throughout the calendar? Are you seeing a decrease, decrease, same saying?
Okay, so I should note, too, we were reporting, the county was reporting numbers on a daily basis, and then what happens with that is that the state's a little bit delayed because they confirmed their numbers. We had two, one in Nineveh and one in Edinburgh, that were in Nineveh and Edinburgh, but not in Johnson County, but they were reported as Johnson County desks, so then our numbers were inconsistent with the state's numbers, and there were some complaints based on that, that somebody wasn't telling the truth somewhere, but it wasn't really actually the case. It was just a confusion with being in multiple, you know, these towns being in multiple counties. So, we are now not reporting any longer. If you want to get your numbers, you'll have to get them off the state's website. So, that's the kind of the decision that we made, just to make sure that it's consistent all the way around. I, we were just talking about this in my IMT meeting when I was sitting outside, outside the arena. I think we're seeing probably about, about ten a day new, of new cases, and we're still losing almost a person a day, it seems like. So, we're at a hundred and four deceased, and I think I saw ten, ten eighty, ten eighty-four, I think, on confirmed cases.
Is the NIMs team still operating?
Yes.
Yeah, I think the reports for that, though, have just been put out further, so we're not reporting every other day or so.
We usually just send it up once a week. Yeah, I think it's just when we're meeting, the incident command team meets on Mondays, and then on Fridays, the full team meets.
So, I hear a lot about the nursing homes in, in New York City, where they have patients who are positive, and they send them back to the nursing homes. We have a similar thing here. How did we handle that here, Betsy?
It really is, it's, it's location dependent. I mean, it's really the facility's decision. They sign contracts with these people. That is, that's the home of most, you know, of, of these individuals. So, once the hospital releases them, where are they going to go if they don't go back to their long-term care facility? That's, that's their home. So, but I had heard that there were a few facilities that were asking you to test negative before you could come back, that that could take months for an individual to test negative after being positive.
Because looking at the statistics, it appears that a very high percentage of the deaths that were recorded due to the virus were in those facilities. I think we even witnessed that here in our county. Of course, we've got some facilities for the age of people anyway, but probably make that a greater number.
I think it's.
Going forward, that's something we need to look at, right? And when, when we have another outbreak or virus of this nature that has disproportionate effect on elderly, you would think that those, those kind of facilities, nursing homes, would have been the first ones that they would move to either try to prevent or to at least not spread it by keeping people in there.
I think they've learned a lot in, you can have, you can have the best plan on paper, but until something happens, you don't know if that plan is going to work or it isn't going to work. And I think a lot of good things happened in these facilities. I think they did the very best that they could do. However, these people are the target population for the virus.